All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. We will begin with our budget discussion. Mr. Goldberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You all should have one-page document that has three lines highlighted in yellow, and I think, I think we're going to get it on the screen as well. This is essentially the same document we provided to you last week, the Budget Reconciliation Between Fiscal '19 and Revised Fiscal Year '20. The only changes are highlighted in yellow, and based on the conversations in the meeting last Thursday, we are recommending first that we fund the school fees of $1 million with use of fund balance, and you can see that that's noted here, and then use that $1 million of the operating budget to fund 10 instructional coach literacy intervention positions, all certified positions, and then some literacy resources. And that would put the total use of funds at $411 million, which is the $410 million that we proposed last week in our revised proposed budget, plus the $1 million one-time use of fund balance. So that is our recommendation based on the discussions from last week. And other than that, I would, I would open it for discussion.
Okay. Anyone got anything they want to ask, or at? Mrs. Thurman.
Yes. So you're taking the raise away, I'm just looking at this for the first time. Teacher raise, that's where we're getting this money, is this correct? No.
So the, you mean compared to last week or compared to the original budget?
Compared to today.
We did not recommend any changes to the 2.5% increase that we proposed last week.
Okay.
This is the closeout from the initial proposal. At the feedback, when we were talking about, there was $1 million and what to do with the $1 million.
Yeah, what to do with that.
So this is, this is what we do with the $1 million, and obviously, it becomes $2 million because you're trying to address literacy and then obviously trying to get more resource to the schools.
Okay, well, that's what I'm saying, I'm just now looking at this, and it's just crazy.
Yeah, I think it's got up on the screen right now, and I mean, literally, there are three lines that are added.
Changed, yeah.
There are three lines that are added, and all were what we discussed at some level last week, just in different forms, as the board discussed in regards to fees, and then obviously, the literacy piece. So this is, the three lines that you see added are just what we put out for consideration, conversation, question, just in general.
So we're getting the, you're talking about getting the fees, just $1 million, and it was going to be $1.8 million, so $800,000 of that's gone, and you're getting it out of fund balance instead of all of our general fund? Is that what I'm seeing? Basically, that's correct, okay.
And the, so the school fees that we presented last week, it would be Option B that would go with this, which is allowing schools to ask for a $30 art, science, technology fee, and no other general instruction fees?
And just one point of emphasis I want to make around fees, I know we talk about and frame it a lot from fees, but really, this is about appropriating more dollars at the school level so that schools have access to, I mean, that's, the impetus for fees is really so they have more resources to be able to do things at the school level. So this is about putting another $1 million at the school level so that schools, leaders and teachers have more access to resources.
They're really not putting another $1 million because if you had $1.8 million, now it's $1 million, so you really took $800,000 away.
Correct.
Yeah.
But we're adding $1 million compared to last year, and one thing that you'll see in the strategic financial plan that we bring to the board going into fiscal year '21 is a strategy to actually properly fund school operations from general fund and have no fees at the schools at all.
That's why I hate to see us.
And fund them at a level, so this is a starting point for us to be able to do that.
Yeah, but we're still taking it out of fund balance. So, you know, I just don't like taking reoccurring expenses out of fund balance. I never have. I mean, it doesn't make sense. I mean, you'll go bankrupt doing this. I mean, there just has to be a way that we can free up money, I mean, these are school expenses, and by state law, we really can't mandate that, we know this.
I agree with you, Ms. Thurman. Putting, taking recurring expenses out of fund balance is not the best strategy. In this case, I think it's a good strategy to create a starting point, because we are implementing things that will create cost savings over the next year. You just can't create the cost savings overnight. So things that we're doing with copy machines, paper, office supplies will create savings, and we can also continue to reevaluate the budget going into next year and incorporate these costs into the overall budget.
You know, and I guess I have a problem with this too, because I know I bought, I bought school supplies for a few students this year, and in those, usually they asked for reams of paper. So I guess I'm just trying to understand, you have school fees that are supposed to pay for some of this, and then you turn around and you have it listed in their school supply list, and, you know, at some point, parents just go, scratch their head and think, what's going on here? And I would be one of those. I just don't like the fact taking it out of fund balance. Like I say, I've just never voted to do anything with reoccurring expenses out of fund balance because it's bad practice. I can't, I can't do it at my work, and I just, I think it's a bad, bad practice.
Mrs. Hill.
Question about the instructional coaches. So originally, we were aiming to fund 28 positions, and that would have put an instructional coach, a reading interventionist, excuse me, a reading interventionist in every elementary school. This proposed budget line item would fund 10. So help me understand what kind of gaps are going to remain in our elementary schools? Your thoughts about placement of those, Dr. Johnson?
First, I mean, one thing to clarify, and I see you have the, that sheet in front of you. There are two, in the original proposed budget, there were two separate sets of positions focused around literacy. One of the instructional coaches and interventionists that are certified, we proposed 31 positions, which was a little over $2 million.
That was under Great Teachers and Leaders?
Correct. And then under Accelerating Student Achievement, we had the 28 positions, which are classified to help with literacy intervention as well. Those would be more like guiding reading specialists and other RTI types of positions. So what we proposed is to include 10 certified positions, and I would let Dr. Robertson or Dr. Johnson talk more about that.
So it's going to be a step in the right direction in terms of getting instructional support at every elementary school. What we're going to have to look at, and what, along with human resources, and Dr. Edwards already started looking at is what model would prevent us from being in the whole supplement versus a plan issue, right? Because we've got to take that into consideration. So first thing that we've looked at were schools that have over 600 students, don't have, that do not have instructional support at this point. I think there's four or five of those schools that have 600-plus kids at the elementary range that don't have instructional support. Then from there, we'd back it down to 500-plus. And so that model, we think, would keep us out of the suplaning issue with Title I. That would take up the bulk of the instructional support. There's also, when you think about reading intervention, we've talked extensively about not having a solid plan in place for RTI. So at least one of those positions would be to help us put a comprehensive plan across K through eight for reading intervention that would tag along with those literacy resources. So if this is approved, we would bring a proposal in August that would be a literacy resource, because right now, we don't have a, don't have a great resource for K through eight in terms of literacy intervention. Guided reading at Tier Two would be an option for that, but we need something that we thought's a little bit more robust and stronger. So we've looked at a couple of options, already have some quotes that we could bring to you in August if this is approved.
So the reading intervention curriculum, is that different than the ELA curriculum?
Sure. So it's for students that are below grade level, that need more intensive support. The EL curriculum, the CKLA that you guys have approved previously, those are Tier One curriculum resources that would be for all kids.
Where we're doing the pilots.
Right. And then the students that are struggling with reading, we need something
Okay.
More sufficient to support them.
So with the 10 positions, so the literacy resources, the $280,000, you said there'd be a RTI K-8, would that, there be a position within that $280,000?
It would be within the, when you say literacy intervention, and that certified position would be within those.
It would be within those positions, okay. And would, within this staffing model, would any of these schools end up with itinerant literacy, literacy interventionists? Like, when I say itinerant, like, that they would be at one school two days a week, and one school one day a week, the way that we do with our SLPs?
Yeah, so it just depends on where they.
We do with our college access folks.
Yeah, depends on where they're located, and if that makes sense. There are some places if schools are close together, and they're the right size, that it could make sense, but I mean, you want to get your most of your money. So when we're looking at 600-plus schools, and that can carry the weight of.
600-plus students?
Yes, students, sorry. 600-plus students, that can carry a large weight of your learning community. So we wouldn't want to split one person between two 600-plus schools.
Okay.
Right? It's, you can see, it's more effective to put them and leave them in one place so they can target support, be an instructional leader. So we would bring that proposal back to you, but what we've looked at so far was schools that are 600-plus that don't already have support, and then schools that are 500-plus that don't have support.
So with this proposed plan, yes or no, we would still have elementary schools that?
Yes.
Yes, we would still have elementary schools that do not have instructional coach/literacy intervention specialists?
Yes.
Specifically, we looked at it, it would, if we went with this proposal, there would be 14 elementary schools who still do not have any general purpose fund-supported instructional support.
Could you read me a list of those?
I actually don't have the list in front of me.
You don't?
I just did the summary.
Okay.
So, yeah, it would be 14 schools that still wouldn't have any, any supports, and then that would bring us to 31 of such positions across elementary school. The original proposal under Great Teachers and Leaders that included 31 would have had every elementary school with a full-time instructional support person.
So with the general fund money for these instructional coaches, would some of the schools that are within that 14 have money from Title I?
Five.
But this is where the supplement, not supplant, comes in, right?
That's exactly.
Where if we want them for everybody, so five of?
Five of those 14 schools are Title I schools.
So that leaves us with nine elementary schools that would not have
Right.
Literacy intervention, and the smaller schools are going to?
Wouldn't have a resource. I'm not, I'm not saying that I know for sure those five Title I schools have enough dollars that they could pay for their own, but I know that five of those 14 schools are Title I dollars.
Okay.
We had gone down to that analysis, but we can answer that question.
Okay, just important for us to recognize that this is, much like with the school fees, this is a step toward our goal, but is not getting us where we, where we ultimately want to be. Okay, to make sure that we're all on the same page, so this budget includes the 2.5% increase across the board, is that certified and classified staff?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so 2.5% salary increase for all at a cost of $6 million, okay? Which uses our money from the state and also our local dollars to do that. It affects the, it moves into place more our staffing model that we've been developing that aligns with our strategic plan. We are cutting away at some of our fees. We'll be adding special education assistants, 15 of those, and five special education students.
Teachers.
How do you all feel about that and our ability to serve our special education students? It's a huge concern within the community, and rightly so, outside of any legal ramifications that we would have. I mean, we just need to do right by kids, whether it's legal or not. So tell me where we are on that.
So as we talked about last, at the last meeting, it will slow down our inclusive practices, our evidence-based inclusion, but we will still move forward.
Okay.
We just won't be.
As quickly.
As quickly. It won't move as swiftly as we had planned, but we still are moving forward.
Okay, so we would make adjustments to that three-year plan?
That is correct.
Okay.
And Ms. Hill, I think the three-year plan included the 30 assistants, so, you know, that would be 10 a year for three years. So this gets us a little bit more than the first year's worth of assistance.
Okay.
And then for, for the teachers, you know, that gets us at least our first year of the plan to where we had wanted to be.
That's really good to understand. Thank you for pointing that out, Brent. Okay. So when we had our last big conversation about this budget, there was quite a lot of conversation about fees and the possibility of taking the $1 million to be able to do some of the things in the classroom that we were interested in, but what you all have, are recommending is a one-time use of fund balance. So the alternative, were the board not to want to pull it out of fund balance, would be, I mean, obviously, the, the choice of the board, but possibly, that would be the option, right? If we don't pull it out of fund balance, but we want these instructional folks, then we, you only get one or the other.
Correct. And we would, we would ask the board to approve the option to allow schools to ask for school fees like they have in the past. Of course, any school that falls short operationally, we're going to provide money to the schools regardless, because we have an obligation to do so.
Of course. Okay, thank you very much.
Dr. Highlander.
Thank you, sir. Let me ask you, on the original request for additional 31 interventionist instructional coaches, the 10 that we have, so that's a net gain of 10 we will have, is that correct?
This would be 10 more than we have currently, yes.
Okay, I want to make sure of that. And the fees, the, excuse me, the literary, literacy resources, is that programs that we're purchasing, or?
Yes, so we'll bring recommendation for a K-8 literacy intervention program.
Okay. And just financially speaking, I mean, I think we, I think so many families are struggling to pay fees. I'd like to see none at all, like Ms. Thurman, but at least I think we're taking a step in the right direction. I kind of hate the way we're having to do it, as you do, Mr. Goldberg, but what, what will, if this proposal goes through, what will our fund balance be then?
We had, at the end of fiscal year '18, we had $41 million in unassigned fund balance. The board approved, take $15 million out for capital projects, which gets us to 26. You'll recall that we've collected $10 million more than we've budgeted, so we will return that to fund balance, which gets us back to $36 million. We will also be under budget on expenses, I don't know how much yet, and I'm not going to know for a while, but you can assume it's at least $1 million, so that would get us to 37. So if we take this million out, it would be around $36 million.
$36 million. So we're a little, the state recommends one month's expenses in fund balance, so we would be only, not too far below that, would we? Are we running at roughly $40 million a month, ballpark?
Ballpark.
So we're only.
That's the average over 12 months. It's, it's different, because there are certain expenses that are once a year, but, but yes.
On the average.
The minimum would be $12 million. The state minimum is 3%, which would be about $12 million. So this keeps us at about triple the state minimum.
Well, that's the minimum. The recommended amount was one month's, it was one month's expenses, is what the workshops I went to at the state, but, you know, but, you know, that's, it's a point of conservatism and, or not, how conservative we want to be, I should say. Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, going into the fund balance, and I'm going to preface this by saying, this is just an option, and nothing more than that. I'm a type of person that likes to have all the options out there on the table when I like to make a decision. And talking to Brent and Dr. Johnson, it is, this is an option that I think the teachers need to know that, that's out there. It's not saying it's, it's the perfect solution, or I really don't even want to call it a solution, because it doesn't take care of our, our needs as a whole. But Monday night, when I left here and I heard, you know, I guess Joe Smith, and maybe Jenny and Kathy talking about teachers really wanting to say, do we want the supports, or do we want the raise? And they've heard they would rather have the supports over the raise. And then having Chairman Wingate talk about solutions, it really kind of hit home with me that, that we're kind of going with status quo and just saying, okay, we got, our budget got rejected, let's go with a balanced budget, we'll do this. And so with that, this is just an option. This is not something that I think this board wants to act on. I think it needs to be heard from teachers. I've heard from teachers all day today, more than I ever have before, and I love it, I want to get them engaged. But I want to put this out there where, you know, our fund balance in talking will be roughly $37, $38 million. We could take a large chunk of that and use that for a one-time bonus, roughly about $1,500, and that frees up the $6 million with a salary increase, and then we're fully able to fully fund special ed, we're fully funding the literacy, we're taking away all of school fees. I, I heard, I was in a conversation with someone today, and it was, you know, it's, we can have this or this, but whatnot and. And this option is that and option. It is, it gives teachers, rightly so, I mean, I understand teachers want their 2.5%. I totally agree, there's no one on this board that doesn't want to pay teachers more. But it's, it's the position we're in, and it's an option. And just, I don't know, we've, this, this idea, you know, I came up with it, and the numbers worked via, you know, talking to Brent Wednesday night, and we've kind of been going back and forth. I don't know, Keith, do you know kind of what this would mean? You know, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but roughly what this would mean for, you know, teachers? This would still include step raises and all of that. I don't know if you want to talk what that would mean, if you can break it down to like a teacher kind of description.
So we went, today, we went and just kind of looked at what that could potentially look like. And so first of all, you know, if you, if you did a lump sum of about $1,500, that would actually, with the 2.5%, of course, that's going in base salary, be clear about that, versus a lump sum, then somewhere a little better than 60% of the teachers would actually receive more money. Now, again, it's not base salary, it's lump sum. And where that, where you see that is like in the early, early scales of the bachelor, the master's, EDS, and doctorate. And, you know, so a 2.5% increase, the low on that would be about $1,074, and the high on that would be $1,737, so $1,737. We will have, you know, our average step at the bachelor's, and this includes having kind of a rough average, but having the, having the, you know, we, one of the things we were looking at in the 2.5 was to expel, unfreeze the first two or three steps, our first four steps of the bachelor's, and then under the, then we would collapse the master's, master's 45 and EDS into one scale with 30 steps. The average steps on that is right around, so an average step increase would be about $885. And that range would be all the way from people who would receive zero up to people who would receive almost $1,500 in a step. So, you know, that's, that's just some of the numbers.
Yeah, and, you know, that was the first time I've, I've heard those numbers. But kind of with my, doing my math, that's kind of what I got to, looking at the scale. And so I'll use what Dr. Johnson said the other night, and, you know, I knew the numbers when I did the math, they added up. I wasn't going to be able to sleep until I put that option out there. It's, it's really not my decision to make. I want to hear from teachers. The board can do nothing with that option, and I'm completely fine with that. But I just wanted to put it out there and give teachers kind of, hey, what, what are you thinking, what do you want to do? Because at the end of the day, it is your paycheck, and, you know, that's something that's important to all of us, and something I want to do, what you think is the best in terms of yourself and, and your students.
Mrs. Thurman.
Yes, well, I had heard about Tucker's proposal earlier. Does, this does not get us where we need to be, because we started this whole conversation when we started talking about the budget, about the teachers, our salaries of our teachers were less than our counties around us. This does nothing to help that situation. His proposal does not. Next year, if the counties around us take the money that the state gave them to give their teachers raises, it's actually making our problem worse. And so next year, we'll be twice in the hole further than we were starting out this year. So I do not see how this is going to help teacher recruitment, which is one of our, I think, even though I don't think teacher recruitment is as big a problem as teacher retention, and that's for the behavior that we're going to be talking about later, but I just don't see where this gets us where we need to be. I hate across-the-board raises, though, because that means the teachers don't get as much a raise as the people in the administration, and I don't like that. I wish there was, you know, at one time, there was talk of, we've, I've discussed it in the, in years past, of finding out what a, say, a, say a 3% raise for the teachers would be, the highest-paid teacher, take the highest-paid classroom teacher in Hamilton County, figure out what 3% of her raise would be, and give that amount to everybody across the board. And that way, instead of broadening the gap between the administrators and the teachers, it kind of levels it out a little more. I think that's something that maybe, maybe we could look at doing. But I tell you what, if I was a teacher looking to come and work in Hamilton County and see how we put our teachers out front and use them as the crying towel when we go to the commission and say, well, our teachers don't make enough money, and yet they're the first ones that we're willing to cut, I just don't, I don't like that. They're the first ones we always want to throw under the bus. And then we have also adding a whole lot more people to our staff, not nearly as many as we had asked for in the beginning, but still, I mean, these people are forever, because government jobs never go away. So these people are forever. And that's adding a whole bunch of money to our budget every year from now on. So that's, that's my reason for not liking that, because it doesn't help our problem. And is this, about substitute teachers, where are they on this? We talked about giving them a raise as well. Is it, are we going to be able to give our substitute teachers a raise, and are they included in any of this?
In the plan, the 2.5, our plan is to provide the substitute teachers a raise.
Okay, because I know, I mean, I'm looking at our main, our core problems, substitute teachers, classroom teachers, and discipline, you know, and reading. But like I say, I'm not real sure that all these reading interventionists help a whole lot, because we've had them for a long time, and some of the schools that are struggling the most. And so I just think it's the whole model that needs to be blown up, maybe started all over again. But that's neither here or there. Like, if I put color on somebody's hair and they want red hair, and I put black on them, and I keep putting black on them, thinking, wondering why it's not red, and so, well, I'll tell you what, I'll get Tucker to come over there and put it on, maybe he'll change. Or maybe we can, maybe I can hire somebody and pay them $100,000 and get them to cut it and put it on, maybe it'll change. It won't, maybe it's the, maybe it's the formula that's the problem, I don't know. But I just think it's something we need to look at. But anyway, like I say, that's what I don't like about that, I just don't think this, I would really like, though, to look at sometime, maybe the plan of seeing what a 3% raise of the highest-paid teacher in Hamilton County and try to give that amount all across the board instead of a percentage raise, because I just don't like percentage raises, because the people in the central office always come out a lot better than the classroom teacher.
Dr. Highlander.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Wingate. There are two groups that I would like to commend very briefly. One is the people, the teachers who have said, don't give us a raise, meet the needs of the kids. And your heart is good, and I appreciate that very much. The second, the second is I want to commend Tucker for trying to think out of the box. Now, I don't necessarily agree with everything, but he's trying to seek a solution, and whether we choose to go there or not, he's trying to think out of the box and seek a solution, and I think that's something we need to do. I will say, I've had a few teachers call me and say that we need the support more than we need the salaries. And once again, my heart goes, but I've had about five to one saying that we're really hurting now. I sent an article that I got from a national periodical where our. I sent an article that I got from a national periodical where our, whether you like or not, our U.S. Education Commissioner went to, in South Carolina, one of our neighboring states, geography people, I didn't say border, I said neighboring states, but where they, 650 teachers there are working in a factory and part-time. I'm going to tell you, I've been in a classroom for 46 years, and if you put your heart and body and soul, as 99% of our teachers do, you can't spend four or eight hours after school working in a factory. You just cannot do it. But some of them are doing it, and I think, I want, I would hope to get a 5% raise. And I agree with what Ms. Thurman, and I think, and Tucker wants that, too. Tucker wants that, too. He's not against it. But I think the minimal 2.5%, the governor is offering 2.5% on the BEP positions, of course, we know that would equate to maybe, Mr. Goldberg, you can help me, maybe 1.6, 1.7?
1.3.
1.3.
It used to be 1.6, it's kind of gone down over the past couple of years.
Okay, well, at any rate, I knew, I was doing the figures in my head, and you're much more, much more astute actuarially than I. But, but at any rate, and I think we can get around that legally, using that money for what he's designated for, but I don't think we should. I think we need to give our teachers at least the 2.5%, because we're going to fall further and further behind if we don't. Tucker, I applaud your initiative. I just think our teachers deserve more than 2.5. We cannot afford to give them less than 2.5. And thank you, Megan, I got a heads up and started thinking and praying about it, and so, don't usually hear it from her, but I did, so. But at any rate, we, at least I had a chance to think about it, pray about it.
Mr. Smith.
Mr. Chairman, let me apologize for being late, couldn't avoid that, and let me kind of weigh in a little bit on, on this. I'm sad that we're even having this conversation. I mean, that's just, we are not even having this conversation, as far as I'm concerned. We'll be having a 5% raise and moving forward, but it is what it is. And I, too, thank Tucker for trying to come up with some additional ideas. I've had a lot of calls today. I don't know how the Times Free Press got hold of this before we did. That's disappointing. I've had a lot of calls today, both, on both sides, support, not support. But I've said before, and I'll say again, that trust is based on observable behavior. And I trust my superintendent, and I trust the staff, and I want to hear from you guys. What are you guys thinking related to this issue?
Yeah, so I mean, there's two, I think it's duly noted, I think to the point, when we started the budget cycle, it was really about two things. One was compensation of our teachers. When we had collaborative conferencing, we, we shot for 5%, and it wasn't just an off-the-hip, let's pick five because it's a good number. It was, it was looking at surrounding counties, it was looking at the market, looking at what we needed to do, frankly speaking, and I said this publicly to our commissioners, I said this in the community meetings, I've said this sitting here in this seat, that, you know, the 5%, although it, it would have got our, our base salary entry for teachers up to a level, starting where Bradley and Cleveland are, frankly speaking, when they do 1%, 2%, you know, every time, it, we still got some ground to catch up. And so it would have closed the gap. So obviously, we start there with, with, you know, frankly disappointment that we weren't and aren't able to be even more aggressive with, with teacher pay. So when we start with teacher compensation and district compensation, the second element is support for students. And so we heard abundantly clear when we've talked to teachers and engaged that, you know, students are entering with more and more challenges, and the complexity of having to try to teach a student a, an area, content area, or the curriculum, sometimes, a lot of times, is secondary to supporting the social emotional needs of the child or the behavioral challenges that are being experienced. And so the budget as initially constructed was simply about those two things, really frankly. It was about making sure that we address our, our need, the needs of our teachers, and then also making sure that we address the needs of our children. In addition to that, you know, obviously, we wanted to accelerate post-secondary work. We wanted to do some things around literacy. We want to make sure that, you know, obviously, we did some things with facilities, et cetera. But those two core areas were, we just heard them. And so we heard them, and from students, we heard them from teachers, we heard them from leaders, we heard them from community members. When you come back and you reset, and you say, okay, this is, these are the dollars that we have, you know, the proposal that we brought forth last week was, you know, based on what we could do, you know, and so here's, here's where you are from the standpoint of our budget. Here's where you are from the standpoint of, you know, looking at what are the unavoyables that exist, and then once you take the unavoyables off, this is how far you can push teacher salaries and still do, you know, some of those mandated things that really, you know, you frankly need to do, we need to do as a system around special education and ESL to make sure that we're in compliance with the state and obviously doing right by children. So that was really the, the two elements. And then the third, you know, kind of the, the next layer was in having that conversation, presentation of that information, there was roughly a million dollars in the, in the conversation that, you know, the board was having and we were having collectively was around, you know, school fees, and really, and again, and I say, it's not about the school fee. The school fee is a result of what really is a root cause of not having enough funding at the school level. And so how do we increase the funding at the school level in a more unrestricted way? And I always put on the principal example, as a, as a school leader, if I had a group of teachers that needed to collaborate together, how do I create more time for them? I work to get subs, and I, and I pay for the subs out of the account, et cetera. And so how do we create more resources at the school level so that teachers and leaders and students can, can be more successful? And then obviously, the work around literacy, and so the achievement gains in the district have been stagnant around literacy, and you've got to have, you know, you've got to have something to do the acceleration with, you know. You can't accelerate student achievement without having something to actually move that, move that acceleration forward. And so, you know, it's like a, it's like a car going on the road. If you don't have any fuel, you're not going to, you're not going to be able to get it done. And so when we stepped back after last week, our conversation was, okay, there's a million dollars, what do we do? And it wasn't even last week, it feels like last week, we've been telling the budget for a long time now. But it was Monday, Monday night, as we had that conversation, it was what do we do? And so what you see before you, a combination of literacy, resources, and interventionists are simply that, simply a response to, you know, that, that conversation that we had, and then obviously hearing loud and clear, not as much again about the fees, but the resourcing of schools, how do we really move the resourcing of schools forward? That's where the, the million-dollar recommendation came forth, from the use of fund balance to begin to chip away at some of that. So that was the proposal we brought forward. Obviously, Tucker again, and commend the board, and obviously, our teachers as well, and would echo what Dr. Highlander said around what you hear, you know, hearing from teachers, they obviously deserve the compensation. Teachers are in it because they care about children, and so, you know, it's, it's, it's being torn between the two, and Tucker's trying to think innovatively about how can we get it all? And so from the standpoint of can the board do it, and it's really the board's decision, absolutely the board can, I think to some of the points that were made earlier, you know, this is a, regardless, it's a stopgap measure, I mean, a couple of things that elevate, regardless of what you do, it's stopgap, regardless of what you do, even with what we proposed on, on Monday or last Thursday, and what we, and what you see tonight, regardless, there are many things that were in the proposed budget that will go unfunded, and a lot of those things we feel very strongly and know improves student achievement. So, you know, again, it's the, it's the board's decision really to make, but I think that, that we know the facts in regards to, you know, teacher pay. If we do a 2.5% right now, we're going to be getting further and further behind. If you do a one-time bonus, we're going to be up against a wall, you know, come next year. So I mean, all those things are very real conversations that really frankly go down to the resourcing of schools and, and how we resource our schools. And so that, that is the, the conversation, and that's, that's kind of where we are on it, and have tried to present it in such a way that, you know, the three lines that are highlighted were in response to the conversation that transpired last week.
Mrs. Hill.
In the midst of this dark and difficult time and discussion, I will say that I find that there's an increasing amount of unity within our community about our public schools, and I find joy in that. Dr. Johnson and your team, you have brought an incredible, perhaps unprecedented amount of change to our district, and our teachers have just held on tight and gone through that really bumpy ride, and we know it's paying off. Joe, you talk about trust with observable behavior. I'm hearing from teachers that the support that they get from central office is head and shoulders above anything that they've ever had before. The instructional coaches that travel the entire district, that are helping our tests become more rigorous, that are holding our children to a higher standard than ever, and it's good for them, and our students are rising to that across, across the entire district. So I feel like we've got, we have a unity, and we are growing a trust because of the, and in doing that, implementing these processes, we will see those long-term benefits. And so I do believe that we are better and stronger together, all of us on this board, our system, our teachers, our families, our communities, our business, our state delegation, and even our county commissioners hopefully will come along with us in this journey of, of unity and of trust and of a, a commonality of purpose that is teaching our students and preparing them for what's next. So I want to make sure that our teachers know that, that they matter in this, and that this board collectively is unified with them and that, and that when we pass a budget, that we pass a budget that demonstrates that. Thank you.
The only other pin I'd add, I don't see them, I don't think it's here, I don't see Jeanette, is Jeanette here?
I'm around.
You're back in the back, why are you back in the back? So we went through a process of collaborative conferencing with our teachers, and I don't know what, three, two, two months, three months, four months, seven months, 12 months, a year. So we, we went through the process of collaborative conferencing, and I think, I think they could attest to this, that we came to the table, I see Stephen, I can see Stephen Hinkle, we came to the table with, with things that, you know, really, they didn't have to ask for some things, like we came to the table saying, we want to do this, and we want to do this, and we want to do this, and we want to do this. And they, you know, frankly, I think I turned, I think some of it was like, well, really? You know, and, and so we forged some relationships with our collaborative conferencing team, and I think the spirit of what we're trying to get done, I think, Jen, to your point, you know, I think that, that group of people that worked very intimately with us for the five months or so that we went through the process know what our intent was, and that's why we proposed a budget based on that intent. And so, and so again, this is, this is where we are, and I think it's, I think it's healthy that the board have options and have conversation and have discussion. I am going to say this, and I will go on record saying this, and I mean this emphatically, and when I share the board presentation tonight, I will share that emphatically as well. We are one school district, and I'm tired of this narrative in Hamilton County. It's not central office versus our teachers and our leaders. We are one school system. And in being one school system, you have to compensate great teachers. And in being one school system, you have to compensate great leaders. And I said this to a group that I spoke to a while back, I'm unapologetic about that, unapologetic about advocacy for our children, our teachers, and our leaders. Teachers, leaders, children, that's, that's what my job, you, this board has charged me with doing. And so we are one school district, and I think that on this, we do hope as our work continues, that, that definitely continues to penetrate this, this community and our schools, that we have the privilege of serving. And so, so I mean, with that, those are, those are really the thoughts you have, you know, a proposal for you, and again, I would echo the, you know, the commendation to Tucker in regards to, to, you know, is this something that's possible? It is absolutely a possibility. It absolutely creates, there are pros and there are cons. It absolutely creates an opportunity to go after some of those things that fueled the acceleration. But it also creates a very real challenge in regards to the elephant in the room around how are we going to make sure that our teachers are compensated for the long haul? And so that is, it's a, it is a stopgap, but it's a very, I think, thoughtful stopgap. And so you've got options that are for the board to consider.
Okay, if there is no other budget discussion, I'd like to move this along here to Dr. Bradshaw.
Yes, sir. Following our last board meeting, we reviewed the code of acceptable behavior. We made edits, changes. We do not have a slide, but what you should have before you is a new version of the code. This would be our online version. More than likely, just for cost, we will not have color. It will be black and white that's issued to the students and the teachers. What we're going to do is take a brief minute to allow Bradley to cover the four areas that you wanted us to go back and revise.
Thank you, Board, Dr. Johnson, Chairman Wingate. I have highlighted the recommendations for you in the code of acceptable behavior so that you could easily follow that. Tried to hit on everything that you had tried to tell us, give us some insight on things that you, you noticed. So on page six, consistency for all students, I think Mr. McClendon mentioned that the last time, and I highlighted number two, which basically says, it's, it assures due process and fair treatment for every student, assuring each an opportunity to be heard. So that addresses the question from him. Number two, student athletes, we changed that to extracurricular programs, as Ms. Hill and I think Dr. Highlander had mentioned. That is on also page six, and so you can read that and see if that meets your recommendation. If you do notice any things that might need to be changed, or you have some questions about, please ask me, or you can get back with me as soon as you feel appropriate, it is appropriate for you to let me know. Next was the digital citizenship. We went back and reworded some of the things. And so one of, one of the concerns, or not concerns, one of the questions from several of you was, you know, how do we word this, and with everything that's changing? And with certain schools, and so we put an asterisk down there, "Due to a wide array of curriculum practices and structural methodology and technological, infrastructural capabilities across the district, each school has the autonomy to establish their own specific guidelines in determining the use of technology during school hours and school events for educational purposes only." So that does address some of the schools that might have different areas of need that they might have to use, or students might have to use cell phones in classrooms and things like that. Next is dress and groom policy, which is also on page eight. And so due to the diversity of the system, and certain schools have dress codes, we tried to incorporate some verbiage in there, but also each school has the autonomy to create a special dress code policy that meets the safety requirements of that particular school and community. And so there are some other things down there with that if you care to read. And so there are some other things down there with that, if you care to read. And I think several of you had asked, I know Dr. Highlander did, just the flow of it, we were able to work through with several help from Dr. Nakia Edwards' office and Ms. McCamey, Dr. Bradshaw's secretary, and we were able to format that in a way so the action legend is now at the bottom of each incident, so it's easy to follow. And with Dr. Johnson's recommendation, we also put it at the very end so that you could use that as a reference point, too. I think that is all the recommendations that you had as a board. Is there any other questions that you need to ask?
Mrs. Hill.
On page 24, the glossary, we still have sexual rape listed. Fill me in on what our council recommended on that. I'd asked about the word forcible and sexual rape there.
Yes, I have not heard word. I know that Ms. Pickard and Dr. Nakia Edwards' office has reached out to Scott Bennett to make sure that verbiage is used properly, or how it's, how it's worded there. And so I think, from my understanding, that Mr. Scott Bennett is going over each of these to ensure that it meets the criteria of the board.
Yes, we're looking over that, and we'll make sure to have an answer back to you all as soon as we can.
Thank you. Also, something that I wanted to point out for the public, corporal punishment is no longer a part of any policy if we move forward with this.
That is correct, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Highlander.
Mr. Jackson, there's been a lot of work here, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Not, it's from a whole, yes, sir, from everyone.
Dr. Towns Edwards, too.
Do we have any other comments, discussion here about this code?
Yes, ma'am, and thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I think that wraps up our work session. We will adjourn.